Thank you so much. One moment, I just need one more minute here, not even a minute. I just need. To do that and Sam, you all that's with you tonight is going to push that got a button and Miss Brandalene, have a good meeting.
Thank you. All right, I will call the December nineteenth, twenty twenty-two Situate School Committee meeting to order at six oh one. The Situate Committee is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner, even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all to all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities to feel welcomed and respected. We ask our committee members and all who participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. As always, anyone can reach me at N Brandalene at sit.org with questions tonight and any other day of the week. And we will start with public comments.
Miss Brandalene, you do have a hand, virtual hand raised. I'm going to ask Miss, Miss Willinger if you want to just name, address, all that. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Heather Willinger. I am a Situate High School teacher. I live at one eighteen Gotham Hill Drive in Marshfield, but I'm coming here today. As a twenty-one-year teacher at S H S, I'm coming to just address a little bit on the policy that will be discussed later on tonight about reimbursements. As you've known, I've run the Model United Nations Club for the past seventeen years. And this year I'm going to take over a hundred and fifteen students on three different trips to New York, Boston, and DC. Over this time, I'll be away from my family for about two weeks this year. And they do this not for the money, not for the the travel, but really because I want to be able to provide my students with experiences that are so important to their development as a whole student. I know that these model UN trips and other international opportunities, travel opportunities like to Ireland and France and Costa Rica are clearly valued by the school committee since it has been incorporated into the global citizenship pathway. But tonight you're going to be discussing the first reading of a school committee policy on travel reimbursement, and I ask that you keep the following things in mind. And these are from my experiences over the last few years in taking these trips with students. When going on an overnight school trip, teachers should be provided with three meals. I've been told in the past that only my dinner would be approved by town hall. This was the argument here was that was because we would eat both breakfast and lunch at home typically. And so they would only reimburse us for those dinner expenses. But I would, you know, if I'm traveling in New York City, I would not be with students, or if I was with, if I was at home, I wouldn't be paying New York City prices. I'd also like you to consider that per diem for meals and incidentals should not be a fixed rate. But instead, based on the daily rate for the city that you're traveling to, this is something that's easily checked through the General Services Administration, the GSA, for the federal government. And that per diem rate includes meals and incidental expenses like coffee and water. If you've ever traveled before with forty-five kids, you might understand why coffee in particular is a necessity. Out-of-state taxes would be the third thing should be reimbursed. In the past, there had been questions about out-of-state taxes like for meals, hotels, and sightseeing. But teachers shouldn't be needing to pay these costs themselves, as well as customary tips for food, luggage, storage, and housekeeping. Those have been denied in the past as well. The bottom line is that teachers want our time and efforts with students to be recognized. And we want to be treated like the professionals that we are. While we have no problem providing receipts, we don't want to feel like every single coffee, excuse me, water that we buy is being scrutinized or runs the risk of not being reimbursed, reimburse, excuse me. And while this might not be included in your policy tonight, I think it's also important to recognize the need for a school credit card. Teachers are currently being asked to use their own personal credit cards to purchase hotel fare, hotel rooms, airfares, and tours. One of my colleagues who's planning a trip was just looking at putting thirty thousand dollars on his credit card for flights for students. I was looking at a twenty thousand dollar credit card bill for hotels. And teachers should not be on the hook and possibly liable for these expenses. And our experiences for students should not come at the back, on the backs of our teachers. So before you settle on this policy, I just urge you to take these concerns seriously and encourage the school committee members to discuss with teachers to better understand the current logjam's that are currently going on in the process and other ideas that we might have to streamline the profit process to make it both fair for teachers and ensure accountability for expenses on trips. I thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Willinger. We will definitely keep that in mind and looking forward to hearing more through this first reading. Again, that's what's good about the process too. It's like just our first reading, so then we can kind of, you know, work out the kinks as it may be and take other things like this into consideration for sure. So thank you so much. Any other? Virtual?
Miss Brandalene, you have no other virtual hands raised.
Thank you so much. All right, we will move on to our student representatives, which we are.
All right, just to make sure he gets a proper credit, Victor does have, well, and be inducing a good excuse as he's currently out of the country. I believe he's in Ireland right now. So to start off, I will address with my headgear. So today it starts our spirit week, I'm ready for break, and today was holiday headgear. I had some good competition. One of my friends made like an entire helmet with like a lit Rudolph on top of her head. So especially seniors get very excited. So thank you, students canceled. Other events will include Aspen in the eighties. Ugly sweater and flannel, and then holiday pajamas right before our last day. Winter sports, I continue to run strong. Special shout out to the wrestling team for the wrestling tournament as they just some great success. With Sarah McLaughlin, EJ Moskowitz, and Liam Holden all placing fourth in their groups, and David Murphy placing first. The swim team won their first meet, and varsity ice hockey and basketball secondary is my first names. Seven students, myself included, from the human geography attendant, geography course, attended an enrichment class developed by the data and feminism lab at MIT and the Abdul Latif Jamal Jamil World Education Lab at eleven Fall Map and Education Center at the Boston Public Library. We provided several activities and teachings on topics from why the aesthetics of maps matter to gerrymandering and how time perception is different depending on your environment. It's lucky to be one of the students to go, and I find it absolutely fascinating if you guys ever have any questions. Students interested in healthcare as a career had the opportunity last week to attend a virtual health and wellness conference presented by Bridgewater State University, which discussed exploring academic pathways to health professions. They hosted a diverse array of guest speakers who spoke about their careers and the path they took together in the following Q and A session. Thank you to the Hosta Club for finding this opportunity. Both the advanced and internal journalism classes held a press conference on Thursday in the S H S library with Trevor Hawes, Boston Globe with Border, and S H S and Situation alum Jack Nelson, a current UCLA student and writer for their favorite, The Daily Bruin. Students asked questions about their career aspirations, their favorite sports to cover, doing journalism in school, the difference between a college and professional paper, and so on and so forth. They will also be holding their holiday homecoming where they have current alums who are back for the holidays in a little party in the packed lobby tomorrow, which I'm very, very excited about. S H S Drama has been busy with rehearsals for the story musical starting, as well as their holiday programs. Last weekend, we did our first S H S drama reading session at the Town Library, where we did several holiday stories, we did acting warm-ups with young kids. Tomorrow, we will be caroling around the Derby Street Shops, and our annual Christmas tree pickup will be starting on January first. Many early decisions for colleges have come out in the last week, so we're seeing a number of students committing to schools. It's about as exciting as it is stressful, so if you have a senior in your life, extra patience these next weeks. It's winter concert month. In addition to the two S H S concerts last week, during G one this Friday, our last school day before break, S H S students will be able to enjoy the talents and hard work of those in chorus and band. This will also include events much anticipated and he will slay rad performance with a special surprise coordinated by Will Drys, Benjamin and Cooper Profit. I was lucky enough to see it last week when they performed for the town, and I will say it's a shame if you haven't gotten to see it. A really fun bunch. I'm really proud of them. I'll open it up to questions, but happy holidays.
Great, thank you. Happy Hanukkah to those celebrating. It's nice that everything's getting festive this week for all of you. Great. Anybody have any questions or comments? Thank you. Next up is Superintendent's Leadership Report, Superintendent Burkett.
Thank you. Superintendent, and good evening, everyone. We're moving Superintendent's report up early this evening because we have a guest who joining us via Zoom. Mr. Mohammed Hassan. Tonight, we're going to have a presentation and conversation about our new conversation tool, known as Survey Tool, Thought Exchange, which you heard me speak about in the past. Thought it was important that Hassan come this evening and do a quick presentation slash demonstration to get the committee and communicate, uh, committee members out there. That heard me speak about it a little more insight into what it actually is, if they are not familiar with it or hadn't had a chance to use it last year. So that's the opportunity tonight. So last year, we used the Thought Exchange and had a record number turnout. For, we didn't, as you recall, probably through COVID, we did maybe a hundred different types of surveys through that two-year period, two-and-a-half-year period. And so we had a lot of surveys to go from. We moved over to Thought Exchange again to last year to a culminating survey on you know, what things we should, we stopped doing in situ at public schools, what things should we start doing to get a feel for what the community wanted, and that could student, staff, and the community. And again, a record number turnout. This year to date, we've used it with our students, middle and high school so far on a sense of belonging. And we will do that three times during the course of the year. That's our first, we'll mid-year and and end of the year to kind of look at that data for social emotional learning. Mr. Hassan was very helpful with Mr. Aniri on that project. He's also worked with Mr. Dave Stevens on the next survey that you'll be seeing out there, which will be our food services survey. Talking about the how we run our food services, and we want students, families and communities opinion that uses the food service or pay for it to have some input as we move to hiring a new director. So that wanted to see how pretty soon again, Mr. Sinis has also acts as our coach to kind of help us choose that. We've expanded our role, so it's not simply central office as, just giving examples, it's Mr. Aniri and Stevens have access to this at our principles, so we hope we can expand this. I want to turn it over to Mr. Hassan now, who will walk us through his presentation and certainly a Q and A afterwards.
Bill, thank you so much for the introduction, and thank you for having me here. Good evening, folks. Once again, thank you all for taking the time and listening to me. I will be about hopefully twenty, twenty-five minutes, and I can wind up by then. Just a little introduction again, my name is Mohammed Hassan. I work with Thought Exchange. I have been, this is my second year with them. And I am working out of Windsor, Ontario. And if you talk a little bit about Thought Exchange, basically, as a business, we partner with over seven hundred different school districts across North America to support them and 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 the school and the district leadership to help them navigate through their most important goals. So your biggest challenges, your, to support you with your change management exercises with rolling out your district priorities, for example, and to gather feedback from all of your different stakeholders. And the goal is to create trust and alignment between your district leadership and the decisions that you're making with all of your stakeholders. Essentially, at the end, what we have, what would you like to accomplish is stakeholder buy-in and ownership of the decisions that you make. And now you're going through growth, and you're going through your change management, you're going through overcoming all of those challenges that you have, that you go through in the district every year, but you're doing this together with your stakeholders. I think if I'm to talk about our whole purpose, a reason for existence, it's around the idea that it's not about me without me, and how we provide access to everyone to share the voice through a safe and inclusive platform. And it's also a way for for people to come together for shared learning, for shared empathy, where you not only share your thoughts and ideas and opinions, but learn from the diverse perspectives of everyone in in the group. With that said, jumping over to our agenda today. And what I intend to do is basically, I'm gonna, this is, this is a little, spend five, ten minutes maybe for demonstration. I think the best sort of demonstration is to let you folks kind of jump in and explore and kind of participate in an exchange in a live discussion. So that's what I'm going to do. I'm going to lead it on that, and then maybe that'll take five, ten minutes tops. And then we'll get into, I'll take maybe another two or three slides talking about what is Thought Exchange, how to use it very, very quickly, and why are we different, why are we better than the typical engaging tools that's that's out there? And then the end we'll close by, maybe add a few minutes, so the questions and answers. With that said, I'm gonna change my screen now, and what I want to quickly do is demonstrate something before I ask you to start participating. So as you get into the exchange, you will land on this page, a welcome page, where you will see the question that you're asked.
Mr. Zom, we do not see your, your screen yet. You want to try that again?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Sorry about that. Do I have permission to share?
You must certainly do, yes. There you go. Wait, now we see it, Mr. Hassan.
Am I sharing now? Okay.
Yes, yes.
My apologies. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Okay, get you out of the way. Right. So. Once you're in the exchange, I'll go back to the welcome screen again, and I'll show you how to get in the exchange. You will be presented with this welcome screen. You will see the question, and then just a little bit of instruction about how the app and how how the tool works. You'll then get into an introduction, a brief message around why are we running this exchange, what is the discussion about, and some quick tips around how to go ahead and participate. And then you will jump into the questions directly. So without further ado, what I'm going to share here now is this screen here. Two ways of getting into the discussion, into the live discussion, you could either use your phone, and I'm thinking it should work on the screen. If you scan that QR code, you will get into the exchange. In the event that it doesn't work, you can jump into tejoin.com, enter that unique password, and you're going to jump into the exchange. So I'm going to go ahead and start the exchange. And let you folks jump in right away.
Yeah. At least you have two minutes, and you can do it safely. So no pressure.
And we can certainly extend the time as well as needed. I should really not speak and let you focus on the discussion, but if you have a second to quickly look, as you can see on top here, we've got twenty participants so far, eight thoughts in there, seventeen times thoughts have been rated.
We go on to start rating?
Yeah, we almost about three and a half minutes in, so thank you. Yeah, if you haven't started reading thoughts yet, it'll be nice to go in and start reading thoughts of others. Sure, about four and a half minutes in. Wait, keep it open a bit longer maybe, or maybe add just not thirty seconds. Okay, I'm going to stop the exchange. Thank everyone for participating. Very quickly, I can have your quick attention here. So if you've seen what was happening around here, it's just, this is dynamic. Just you're seeing the collaboration between people and between thoughts. As the exchange is unfolding, what you see here on the right is the list of thoughts that's been shared and that's been rated with the highest rated thoughts jump up to the top. And then on the next screen, and we're not going to do this today for the interest of time, but in the event where this was an exchange run across the team meeting or cabinet meeting, and this is used to share ideas and thoughts, you could go through some of the top thoughts that's that's right here in the meeting director, and you can address some of them. And as you address them, you could take them off, check them off, as you've addressed those concerns, those thoughts, those those ideas. Some of these thoughts here are really great. This is stakeholder engagement. That's really great. That's that's really what Thought Exchange is all about. Having a safe place to post thoughts. Exactly. That's exactly what we're all about. Having a safe and inclusive place for everyone to share the thoughts, not being, without fearing anyone to understand concerns and priorities of stakeholders. Excellent. Good to see others contributing and thinking. Yes, there's some great thoughts here. And as you can see, these are thoughts that have been rated highly, and they they rise up right to the top. Twenty-three participants in the exchange today, about twenty thoughts, hundred and ninety-eight times, right, thoughts have been rated. And the ratio here being that on an average, every person have seen and rated ten thoughts on average. And now the exchange is closed. If there are no questions on this, I'd like to jump to the presentation. Is that okay? Okay, awesome. So I'm going to close that. Okay, like I said, we are going to have a few minutes at the end of the, my presentation to have to go through some questions and answers, if you have any questions. But while I'm going through, if you have any questions, feel free to raise your hand or stop me and ask questions right away, and I'll try and answer as much as I can. So what is Thought Exchange? I think Bill mentioned this, you know, Thought Exchange is is something better than the survey, so, and he's absolutely right, spot on. Thought Exchange is almost like a survey, but it's just so much better, right? So everything you can think of that you want, that you cannot do with the survey, but you'd like to, you can do that with Thought Exchange. And I'll explain that in the next slide. It's basically Thought Exchange allows you to harness the power of collective intelligence, you know, where you collect sincere, honest, unbiased data from all your stakeholders, so be it your students, your parents, your your staff, your your community members, community members with students in your schools or without students in your schools. And the end goal, like I said, to is to inform your decisions where everyone is included, everyone gets a voice. And as you're doing so, you can scale conversations from six to eight people in a team or cabinet meeting or like a forum that we have today to, let's say, hundreds or more, and maybe a school town hall or, you know, thousands of people in a community, ten thousand even. And you can scale these conversations in literally seconds. And what you also get is you get the data back from your exchange, from the from the collaboration. You get the data back in seconds, so you're able to kind of uncover critical insights, take those informed decisions, navigate change, navigate challenges. And the most important thing is you're aligned with all your stakeholders, so you can manage change together with people, not alone. Thought Exchange has been called many different things. We've been called a collective intelligence platform, a discussion management tool, change management platform, diversity and equity tool as well. And of course, a tool to scale conversations. Over to the next slide. So why is Thought Exchange different? We took all of the different engagement tools, methods that's out there. We took the best from these tools and we removed the shortfalls and packaged it in one box for you. So basically, we solve the typical meeting experience where you're only hearing from the loudest person in the room, whether it's a, it's an in-person physical meeting or 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 an online meeting, for example. And everyone participating in an exchange is exposed to the thoughts of other people as well. So it becomes a discussion. It's a two-way conversation. It's, it's not one-way street. It's it's a dialogue. It's a discussion, two-way conversation. You know, it's 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 not only what what you are sharing with your stakeholders, it's you're discussing having conversation with stakeholders, but also stakeholders discussing within themselves. And with this process, you are building empathy, you're building community, you're strengthening your community, you're creating buy-in on the decisions that you're making. And you're building trust and ownership of these decisions of the initiative, initiative that you take. And you know what? Maybe sometimes you'll never please everyone, or everyone will agree with initiatives you're taking with the decisions, but they will support the decision because they know, they know you got there. They know that there was a collaboration. They know that it was collectively agreed. And like I mentioned before, we get the results back in seconds. So as soon as you get, and I'll jump into that after the next slide, you get the results back in seconds. Whatever you've discussed, whatever findings you get from the discussion, we help you unpack this data. Find out where everyone is aligned, find out what's valued most, find out what matters most to your audience, to your stakeholders, does, once again, enabling you to take those data-driven data informed decisions. Any, anything that stands out so far? Any questions from anyone in the group? Okay. So. How does Thought Exchange work? And you've you've had the participant experience, and it's very simple, very And you've you've had the participant experience, and it's very simple, very straightforward, as you as you as you've seen. But also at the leaders and at the at the district leadership and, you know, at the user end, it is also as simple as that. So the product works by letting you. Ask a single focus question to a group of people. And we have a team of experts that that help you support you, kind of build this, build this question, ask the right question to your stakeholders. Participants or your audience, your stakeholders then share responses anonymously and also rank the responses of others in the group. So like I said before, it's like a discussion. So when you're sharing your thoughts, you're also discussing. And and looking at the perspectives of other people within the groups you're sharing and you're just having the discussion with the entire group. Everyone is engaged, you know, everyone is agreeing or disagreeing with different perspectives, right? But the leaders, when you get the results, you're seeing this prioritized list of thoughts and ideas showing. What's most important to people and why do people agree, you know, what do they value most? And of course, why did they disagree as well, right? So think of solving this, like I mentioned before, the problem of hearing. From the loudest voice in the room, and you get a response, you get a result, you get the sentiments that reflects. The collective agreement of the many and not just a few loud voices, right? And then, like I mentioned before, the end goal is that, once again, coming back to. You are now able to take those informed decisions and those decisions are owned by by the collective agreement of of the many. I'm going to switch my screens here again. What I want to show you is very quickly, I'm not going to dive too much into it. But we ran this exchange just now. We've had. Twenty-three participants, twenty thoughts, hundred and ninety-eight times thoughts have been rated. And like I mentioned before, on an average, each person rated thoughts ten times. And this is what we call the Discover Dashboard, the analytics, the data, the results page where you see different versions of the data. And like I mentioned before, we, the team of Thought Exchange will help the leadership of the district. Kind of help unpack this so they can take this back and use this to make in those informed decisions. But you have different versions of the data. You have something called the Word Cloud. Where you can see what are the most spoken about words or highly rated words within each of the thoughts. Something called a thoughts tabs, you can see all of the thoughts within the exchange. Sorry, we go back up again. We also kind of help categorize each and every thought into high, specific, different, specific areas, for example, and we call them. Themes and then you can you can categorize them into themes so that they can help you direct your next steps. This is something that's done that you can do as well. And the most important thing is you can create reports with the click of a button, right, literally in seconds. And that's important because as you gather the feedback, as you have collaborated and engaged with your community members and your stakeholders, you want to get back to them, you want to tell them what you have heard, you want to tell them. You know, what was, where was the agreements and then what are you going to do with this feedback? What are your next steps? So I'm gonna stop with that. There's a lot more results in a lot, lot, lot more different types of results and pages here, but we're not going to get into that. Going back to my presentation. Questions and answers, anything that have stood out? Any any questions that you have, anything you'd like to know more about the product itself, about the tool itself, feel free to ask.
So thank you for that presentation. I appreciate it. It's good just to hear more about the the tool. So I had a couple of questions. The first is around the questions themselves. So some of the things that the school is measuring. Specifically belonging, culture, social, emotional, and potentially knowledge eventually, they're pretty complex constructs. And so I'm wondering, how are you creating these questions? How are you putting questions together to make sure when someone responds to a question about belonging or culture? That you're really capturing the different dimensions of a construct like belonging or culture because there, you know, you can't really get that, get at that with just one question. So I'll ask that question first.
Thank you. And that that is a great question. And I think. If I can rephrase, I think it's more like, is there any research behind these questions? The short answer to that is what Thought Exchange allows you to do is it allows you to open up a discussion forum. With a group of people, and it's a way to kind of scale conversations. So imagine having that discussion where everyone's kind of coming together. And having a discussion around what's important to them based on a certain topic. But you're able to scale the discussion. So instead of having it around. Imagine, imagine you have thirty, forty people in a room and or even a hundred. Or or let's say a thousand in in a school, for example. How do you get those people together to talk about it in a very easy way? And that's what Thought Exchange does. To your question about how do we create these questions? This is a collaboration between, we have experts within the business who have. Done this over the last ten, fifteen, twenty years. We've got that experience. We bring to us the experience of working with different partners across North America. And then, as we discuss with the leader from your district, we're gonna talk about. What is the expectation? What are you trying to find out? What is the goal? What is the progress you're trying to make? And then we kind of work backward to see what is the best question to ask to get to that, to get to that, to get to the results. To your question about how do we unpack the construct, how do we? And one question may not get that, yes, you're right, but this is a way to kind of get people to speak up and talk about what's important to them and. Unpack those those insights, right? So the exchange allows you to ask several. Survey questions as well. So as you've seen, I had enabled one survey question as you went in to ask you if you're a community member or a community member. Or a student or staff like that, you can upload, I think, sorry, yes, you you can embed ten survey questions within that. So to the example of, we asked the sense of belonging question, we had that exchange in the recent past about a month ago. And I worked with Greg and we we loaded the exchange to about five or six survey questions in the beginning. That can help you get some quantitative data regards to presentations of who's saying what. But what the exchange allows you to do is it gets you that qualitative data where people can open up. In that unbiased manner from a safe space and talk about what it is that they want or expect. Or that's important to them. I'm not sure if that completely answers the question, but.
Yeah, can I ask one more? Um, sure. Another question I noticed when you showed the report on the themes, can you speak a little bit to how those themes emerge?
Great question. Can I? Share my screen again for a quick second?
Yes, Mr. Asan, you certainly can. I'm sorry, just took that down for you so we could see you.
Thank you. So I'm gonna go back into that. Let's open the dashboard again. It's easier if you're seeing this. So basically, there are several ways of creating this theme set. One is the system does, the AI does a great job, and it basically collects sentiments of people that. Based on keywords and sentiments, positive, negative thoughts, and it clubs them together based on that. So. As you can see here, there are thoughts around community members, stakeholders, consensus, priorities, growth mindset. And then obviously some thoughts that were not, that were not grouped or categorized. This is what the AI does, and it does a pretty good job doing that. That being said. The AI does not always understand the complete context of the district. So. Thought Exchange, in this case myself. I will be working with whoever the leader is who was in charge of the exchange. To kind of help him categorize those thoughts into meaningful buckets, into meaningful themes, right? There's a way you can do that. You can get into theming and then we can go through the thoughts. It's a bit of a heavy lift, but you can do that. Go through those thoughts and then bucket them, categorize them, theme them into meaningful themes. Into blocks that you can then discuss with your, whether it is your communications team, whether it is your district literacy and numeracy team, whether it's your district. Health and safety team, for example, and give them those directions to progress the next steps. That's what you can do. What we also have in the backend is, I can quickly demonstrate maybe just easier, is have. Some templated theme sets. And the themes are, theme sets are based on what has been, what thought exchange has been used most often over the last ten, fifteen years. So bonds, for example, facilities planning, for example, strategic planning of this free budget planning, staff retention. These are themes that's that's kind of preset made already. And you can apply this to an exchange. So I could go in, let's say, for example. If this was, let's say, a school safety exchange that we ran just now, I could select school safety, copy that, and then. I can apply it to the exchange. So now, for example, in addition to what the AI did for you. You can also have a more direct, complete, meaningful theme set because you've added the template there. Of course, you can always go back and edit, update, modify based on your understanding of the thoughts, based on what's needed. For you as a district in terms of next steps and direction, you can go and edit those those theme sets. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna stop sharing. Any any more questions?
I have a, sorry. I have a quick question on the, I guess, actually completing the survey, I think. That we, I participated in one so far in addition to tonight's sample. But if I don't want to answer a question or if it's not applicable to me, is there a way to to do that? I think that in my experience, I haven't been able to. I just want to make sure that the data responses we're getting are. Accurate because there's some thoughts out there that I may not know anything about. Let me tell.
Right. So 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 if I understand that, right, like if you if you didn't want to participate in an exchange, is that what you're?
I'm sorry.
To answer a question?
Yeah, so so if there's a thought out there and I'm rating it, but it's not applicable to me, can I skip? How do I skip it so that my response isn't recorded?
Right, excellent, great question. I wonder if I can demonstrate that. But yes, the short answer to your question, I'm not going to jump into it, but yes, you can. So every time you come, you you get in an exchange, you don't necessarily have to. Answer the question, right? You have, let's say, for example, get in an exchange, there are already some people engaging in there, there's some discussions going on, and there's some thoughts in there. You can't think of a thought yourself, and that's okay. That there's nothing wrong with that. You can just skip that and go get directly into rating. Where now you're seeing you're open to this whole sea of different ideas and thoughts that other people, other people have shared, you're learning those perspectives, and then you're rating those thoughts. And as you do that, if you think like, oh, hang on, I now have a thought, you know, I want to share, you can jump back again, share your thought and go back to rating again. So it's very intuitive. It's back and can go back and forth anytime. The only thing you cannot skip is. Those preloaded survey questions at the beginning because that helps us kind of. Segregate, desegregate the data at the end. So that's something you have to answer, can't skip that. So in the example of today's exchange, where you have asked the question about if you're a student, parent, or community member. You couldn't skip that, but you didn't have to answer the question. You could skip the answering the question part and then jump directly into it. You can do that as well.
But once I got into reading the other thoughts, I didn't know how to skip a thought, like I just hit next and it would. That I didn't want to read. How do I skip that and not read?
You you can skip that. Okay, so let me, let me, let's let's do that. Let's try and see if I can get into that. Quickly, one more time. It will take me a quick second. Reopen. I'm going to. So I'm in the exchange. Going as a student, I'm going to skip thoughts. I'm not gonna, I'm gonna skip that.
Mr. Asan.
For example.
Mr. Asan, once again, we do not see your screen. I think you have two different screens going on.
I am so sorry.
That's okay.
So you're, are you seeing my screen now?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. So you're in this place where you are reading thoughts and I have rated that. I like that really very much. I've rated that. This one, not so interesting. If you click on those three dots. You can just skip it like that. And then this is just a, you know, you can do whatever you want to do here, but skip there. So you don't have to rate every single thought. And since I'm here, I do also want to highlight that.
We'll do a better job explaining that in directions because. There should be like a hot button that says NA or skip. I think it'd be easier in the interface.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, thank you for the feedback. I appreciate that. I certainly will take it back. And this isn't. I agree, it isn't super intuitive that that that's what you have to do. But I will certainly take it back to our product team. Absolutely.
I would say like down below would just say not applicable or whatever.
Right, right. Yeah, it should be, it should be a bit more intuitive and it doesn't say anything here. So yeah, absolutely.
That was my, that was the issue that I that I experienced tonight and previously.
I hope that answers the question, but thank you for the feedback. Really appreciate that.
Option on the phone today? You did, okay. Okay.
Just needed in the instructions.
Okay, thank you. That was helpful.
Thank you. Awesome. Any further questions?
Hi, yes, I have a question. You said during, one of the benefits is this removes bias. The thought process removes bias. But if I in in, you know, I don't, I don't submit an answer. And then I'm reading all the responses. Then I think of a response, isn't that somewhat? I would then submit somewhat of a biased. Response.
That is a great question. I love that. Thank you. So here's the thing, let me, let me get back to the, let me answer the first part first. How is it unbiased? So what Thought Exchange does is. Not everyone sees the the thoughts in the same order, right? It's the algorithm does that very well. It kind of mixes up the thoughts based on the rating pattern, based on as people come in and how thoughts are coming in. The idea is that. At least every thought is given that chance to get viewed and to get to get rated, right? So every thought gets that chance. So you may not be able to see, like, in today's example, how many thoughts did we have here? We had twenty thoughts, but not everybody of you rated twenty thoughts. On an average, everyone rated about ten thoughts per person. But what the what the algorithm does, what the AI does is make sure that. At least all twenty-three of you have seen the thoughts in some order, that every thought, all of the twenty thoughts are given that. Opportunity to be seen and 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 to be rated. So that's how we kind of remove that bias from. From the exchange, right? Every thought, it's about the thought, it's not the person, nobody knows who shared which thought. And and that's what happens. To your question about, yes, in the beginning, you may not have shared a thought, and then you you jumped in and you went through, but maybe five, ten thoughts, and you thought, hey, that's a great idea. I thought of an idea myself, I'm gonna rate it. Remember, there are three steps to the exchange, right? It's about sharing a thought. And you've shared your thought, and then it's about rating, right? Now you're looking at the perspectives of everyone, right? And what that does is that creates agreement, agreement or disagreement, right? So yes, you're right, you're thought, there could be some bias because you've seen some thoughts and that's triggered a thought of your own. But then that thought may not be liked by everyone, right? So that way, through the process of rating and through how the system kind of makes sure that everybody, every thought is being seen. Your thought may not rise to the top. It it might, it might go to the bottom of the pile. So it could be the number seventeen to eighteen thought, just because. There wasn't, let's say, vast agreement or collective agreement on that thought. So that way it kind of works on in terms of removing the bias. But yes, to your point, yes, sometimes that can happen. But then the system does that in the backend to kind of make sure that every thought is given. Given that, given that option to be seen. And even though the thought is biased, if it is something that is like, if it is something that is great, and you have vast agreement, agreement. Across the group, then that's a good thing because it's not about. You know, how I came to the thought, but the thought itself, there is agreement on the thought, there's agreement on that idea. And then that's something that we should consider and work on. Hope that answers your question.
Yes.
I think it does answer the question. I think we just need to be really careful with saying things are unbiased and say, you know, this is clearly serving a valuable purpose. You know, having conversations at that scale, it's not a survey, which is serves a very different purpose. So I just think we need to be really mindful of what we're able to do and not do with this tool. Because, you know, we are, we're definitely rating these responses, but there's bias because we're only rating. What is responded to, right? Like, it's it's a limited number of responses. So I think we just, there's, I just think we need to be careful with what we call this and what we can use this information for. But that's just my own opinion.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that. And yes, right, sometimes it is. So I would go back to it if there was, it was a. So I would go back to it if there was, if it was a larger group. Uh, you you are exposed to going through all of the thoughts and rating them, everyone is, but obviously. Time is is of the essence. So uh, we would always recommend everyone to go and write at least twenty, thirty thoughts. That gives us a good benchmark regards to. Uh, how the thoughts, how the most agreeable thoughts rise up to the top. Uh, thank you. I appreciate feedback. Appreciate it.
Follow up. In just a follow up to, I think what Thought Exchange has done a good job of is listen to feedback. So any feedback in addition to nine, I know uh, I was taking this feedback back. For anybody that's listening or or takes us in the future, uh, send us your feedback and they do. I think that's one of the strengths. That's why we liked it is that they gave us examples of feedback, even that we've used in one survey to our next. They cater to individually or to improve their product. So thank you all for that. We'll continue to do that. I know they're listening, so.
Kind of just to add to that point, I think part of that and what Peter was getting at too for us was is that. So even with our next upcoming one, if it's related to food services, if you're a staff member, you're. Going to have certain views of the food service process versus a student and how do you? How do you rate a thought that you actually have no?
Idea about.
Yeah, like if I'm a student and a staff member is making comments about, you know. Something pertaining to their lunch period or what serves their needs. How can I be going through that as a parent and know what a teacher might need in that? That that helped me, made me feel uncomfortable in the first one that I was. Make like starring something that was in the sort of autonomy of a teacher's. Space. So maybe that's a must thing to sort of separate those. I would have a teacher one versus like. I didn't feel comfortable, even on rating some of the students, well, we didn't do with students, but with staff.
You and you are in the data able to.
Sort, okay.
Sort. Staff member, kids, parents, community members.
That might help us get fewer comments to rate that don't apply to us if we were not all taking this.
Yeah. Um, I wanted to just add on, it's, I see it more or less as like rating is more in more like liking and dislike. So even if you don't. Have the same experience as the comment, the person who commented, you can say, hello, that's a, it's a great thought. Yeah, raise it high or like I, you know, maybe that's not a great thought.
Doesn't always have to be your idea. But yeah, uh, if I can jump onto the crowd, that that was a great uh comment question. Uh, thank you for that. My friend goes very quickly, so. As as a district, you can run as many exchanges as you wanted to. Uh, so. The first option is, you know, if you want to just run an exchange with one stakeholder groups, just students uh or staff, you could do that. We could run. The same exchange multiple times with with different stakeholder groups. So. Staff can have a different change, students can have a different change. If you want feedback from parents as well, we can do a different exchange for parents, right? That is possible. We could also do what we did today is we kind of had these questions, we preloaded these questions, so everybody answered that question about. Uh, are you a student, parent, family, school committee member or uh staff faculty? And based on that. You are then headed to the question, to the exchange itself, but. There are two ways of adding this survey question of preloading a survey question in an exchange. One is, this is the standard way where. Everyone gets to see everyone's feedback. As you're going through the exchange, uh, right? So you're seeing like, doesn't matter whether you're a student or a parent, you're seeing everyone's feedback and then you rate them, right? There's, you know, students might have some great ideas, staff might have some great ideas, and it's okay to kind of collaborate. So where it's needed to have this kind of collaboration, you have the access to do so. In terms of how does this help you unpack the data? What I'm looking at now is one of the most important, what's valued by everyone, what are the most important thoughts or or what's important to everyone? But if I wanted to look at, okay. What is just important to, what are the parents talking about? Or let's say, uh, what are the coming, school community members talking about? What's important to them? What do they value most? I'm now looking at the thoughts based on what's most valuable to that stakeholder group, right? Right, so this is number two. The third way of doing it is something called. We call it participant group where you're able to run one exchange, but then run multiple exchanges with one exchange. So. In the same example, if I added this as that participant group question. You'd have students going into a separate rooms, almost like setting up a Zoom, uh, what do you call those uh meeting rooms? Right? Students will go into a room where they're just collaborating, engaging with students. They're not going to see the the results or the thoughts from. Parents or or staff, and then the staff are going to go into a room where they're just talking, collaborating with staff, staff members, parents are going to go into a different room. Where they're talking and collaborating just with parents, right? And you can do that. So to your point. If you wanted to, if there's an exchange which has to be kind of divided and not everybody's collaborating with everyone. Then you can, you can department, departmental mentalize that as well. You can get people going into different rooms in their own silos and their own groups and just having the discussion with just their group. The end result is you still get the same data, right? But you're able to then disaggregate based on which group answered or which group shared what results. And you're not going to see, you're going to see the same thing, but you'll see, let's say, for example, in the case of parents, you're going to see. Just the parents' results and what the parents rated. Does that answer the question?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Awesome. So great, great, great questions. Any 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 further questions?
Yeah, I had two quick questions and thank you for the presentation. This was uh really great to be this interactive. Um, for the profile question that you asked at the beginning, like, are you a student, a parent, a committee member? Can you have multiple questions to kind of gauge who a person is, like I'm a student, end of in high school, I'm a teacher and I'm at this school as opposed to just, you know, high level? Breakdown.
That is a great question. So. If I, if I can answer the why first, why do we have these questions preset is because this helps kind of disaggregate the data. Looking at the data from different perspectives, from different angles, right? What's important to students, what's important to uh parents, what's important to different stakeholder groups, right? Survey questions, we also sometimes call them uh demographic questions, right? You can ask up to ten different survey questions. You can preload this exchange with ten different survey questions, right? And that can have many, and each question can have many survey response options, so many multiple choice options. So. There have been times with, so just consider large school district, you know, uh thirty, forty different schools. And they're running, let's say, a student voice exchange across the entire district. But they want to break it down by school buildings and they can, you can, you can then load the question that what school building, what school do you belong to? Add those thirty, forty different school names and then as the students get in, they will answer, or any other stakeholder group gets in, they'll answer based on. Okay, I'm a student, parent, staff member, I am uh. Related to so-and-so school or my child goes to so-and-so school or so-and-so grade, for example. And demographic questions, right? Uh, what race, ethnic background do you belong to, for example, or? Any of those kind of questions can be asked. And then you look at the data based on that. Okay, if I'm looking at. Let's say, for example, we had a student voice exchange, a school culture climate exchange, and now I look at. Look at this based on my uh. My 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 racial breakdowns, my diversity, okay, what does different race groups think? That's important to that. You can do that. So that's what it helps you do, up to ten survey questions. Uh, and yes, you can ask different questions to help you break down, unpack, disaggregate the data.
Okay, thank you.
And um.
Thank you. The question I had that didn't get very good asked. So for the reporting that you showed at the end. Is that something that the administration can run and pull or as people are going through and filling out the survey, can they run their reporting themselves just to kind of see where where everything stands currently?
This. Quick, second to. This one that I'm, that I showed you in the end.
Uh, yeah, it was like the the bar graph that you showed.
Right, so. The two types of reports that you get, one is as you participate in the exchange, right? And you go through the end of it. So this is, let's say, uh, the audience experience, right? Your stakeholder experience, they've gone through the whole thing. And they're looking at the results, they're looking at, you know, what are the different topics, like a bit of a word cup kind of thing. All of the thoughts uh in terms of activity, it'll show here what he has rated. But then they can also see here in terms of, you know, what what are the uh highly rated thoughts and as the scroll down. The the thoughts that have been rated not so highly or the lowest rated thoughts will be rated bottom. That's what the participant will see, the audience will see. In terms of uh what does a school leader see? This is what you're going to see. So depending, those who have access to the dashboard, those who have access to the tool, they're gonna, they're gonna get to see this results, right? Uh. In the reports tab. There, you can run different types of reports here, so whether it's in the form of a slide deck or it's a very high level, we call it leader insight report, high level summary of the exchange. Or even a uh, let me just create that very quickly and show that looks like. Even an exchange, even a report like this, which gives you. That view of the, all of the thoughts listed in ranked order. Uh, or even. Uh, the theme set bar graph example that I showed you, chose that as well. And this is something that you can just share back, copy the link and share back with anyone that you wanted to, whether it is your audience, back to your audience or it is with district leadership. And the board members across the district, you can share with them, with your staff, however you want to do it. You can also go and create a slide deck. And all of these customizable, right? It is already there preset, but you can customize based on. What's important to you, what do you want to demonstrate, what do you want to present to your school leadership and to your community members? You can do all that. This is something that you can present, download, edit, modify as you please. Uh, in terms of who has access to this, so everyone who has a license with Thought Exchange. Uh, has access to this dashboard. At the same time, those uh with license or with access to it, they can provide access to other people as well. By going to this manage tab and they can just. Add people within this exchange and send it off to other people for them to view as well. I hope that answers your question. Awesome. Uh, any further questions?
I think that's all the questions we have. Uh. The presentation.
Uh, okay, well, thank you. And if you have any question, you know what I'm going to do? Uh, give me a quick second here. Uh, feel free to. Where is the chat?
Uh, Mr. We don't, we don't have the chat in there if you want to.
Okay, that's okay. Uh. I can.
We can follow up, Mr. Sun, you and I afterwards tomorrow.
Sure, awesome. And if you have any questions, you know, uh, I am working closely with with Bill and with Heidi as well. So feel free to ask them any questions. I'll I'll be happy to get back to you.
Thank you so much.
Well, thank you, everyone, for uh giving me this time. Uh, once again, Bill and Heidi, thank you so much for having me here today. Uh, it was a pleasure meeting all of you and uh. You folks enjoy the rest of the evening. Thank you so much. Take care. Bye, everyone.
All right, next, uh, celebrate student learning with Principal Beatty from Gatesford School.
Tonight. Very excited to have the opportunity to share with you our celebrations to learning. Uh, it was here, I think, two weeks ago or three weeks ago and we did the. School improvement plan where we went over a lot of data. Student achievements today is the celebration. All that is one of the fun stuff behind it, which I'm excited to share with you tonight. This year, all schools in situ are following the two pillars of our district, which are a culture of collaboration, the culture of excellence. And as we are celebrating student learning and staff learning, uh, you will see these themes throughout everything that we do as a school. How we celebrate student learning, uh, one of our biggest pieces of how we celebrate deals with project-based learning and performance-based assessment. We give traditional things like essays and tests and quizzes and homework, but our big celebrations are around performance-based assessments, which have in all areas for school. What that leads to is public exhibitions of student learning. And so you'll see many of the examples and photographs that are presented. We like having students share what they know with those that. Don't go to our school. We like having visitors in to help serve as audience members to probe our students' thinking, to ask them questions. And for them to really show what they know um in a variety of different ways. These displays, uh, we try to find ways to capture their learning and then inspire others. And so we have all the technology we have in our school and the display cases, uh, we like to have big displays of student learning that. Cause students to stop and look and say, what's that? And how do I learn that? Um, and then finally, when we have big ideas, uh, linking to project-based learning and performance-based assessment. We spend a lot of time with the reflection piece, um, whether students are reflecting. A process for completing a math test and reflecting on how they. To understand. Um, those come up in reflection, we want to show those with students, with everyone, uh, to just show. When we talk about academic achievement and growth, I guess peace, we saw this is to both side. We understand students. Levels, ability, have different strengths and challenges. And students to individualize and splice. In terms of uh, first class. Knowledge and achievement growth that comes in all different ways. Uh, you can see students getting individualized, uh, notes from teachers, you'll see. Rubrics that contain different pieces of feedback. And we recognize that every student is working on different things. Every student is again coming in one place and leaving in a place better than they came the day before. We as a school do have school team and core value awards. We get these throughout the year, but specifically more towards the end of the year. And this is where we recognize students with high achievement. It's also a place where we're able to recognize growth. Um, publicly for students that have grown tremendously and then our core value awards, linking the challenge. Them excellence, appreciating each new experience, thinking, creating, collaborating, empowering each other. Say possible. All those like to academic achievement, to five ways to publicly recognize our students. Uh, so I want to conduct my most presentation. The most small. The national junior inter society. This was. Use these two things to help students, inspire students to do the best they can do as they think. Uh, one of our greatest. Things we're doing this year that in math. Because we are now using a progress model tool for all students throughout our middle school, students are tracking their own progress uh in different domains. And every six weeks or so, in some of our classes, our students are comparing their data from six weeks ago to today. And as we're trying to build intrinsic motivation uh to actually impact learning, so to see what their efforts and effective strategies and. Fully selling to them. A belief that they can do. Celebrating students, uh, this is the best part of our place. Uh, so we went very hard to. Design and implement personalized outreach tactics so that students are getting personally recognized for all different things. Uh, whether it be their effort, their kindness, their achievement. We go out of our way this year to make sure that um every student does have at least three times a year, get recognized. Uh, or be acknowledged for something, uh, something that just makes them unique. We believe that our diverse opportunities and the programs that we offer allow students to use their strengths to build their areas for growth. And so whether that be academic programming, extracurriculars, uh. Athletic integrals, everybody has opportunities to recognize their true strengths and to use those to grow within whatever areas they need to grow. And finally, we try and we on a regular basis recognize individual students for their contributions to our school community. Uh, we have a wonderful school community, we have wonderful members that contribute to help make us uh to help strengthen our culture. Go out of our way as much as we can to recognize people's contributions of is able or our culture is such a great and strong culture. In addition to students, uh, it's important to celebrate support staff. Uh, we believe that providing staff with opportunities for leadership, formal leadership and informal leadership opportunities uh helps to celebrate the strengths of our staff. Uh, we have a strong instructional leadership team with twelve, ten members on it and they help us to lead school-based initiatives. lead school-based initiatives, district-based initiatives. And by seeing and recognizing staff that do tremendous things and inspires others to do tremendous things. And we're just so very grateful and proud to provide us many. As we continue the year, really, everything. 442, since keeping everything going, we want to make sure that everybody feels welcome. Where everybody has a seat at the table and is recognized and represents the culture that we have in our school. And these are just some of the examples of extracurricular pieces, but also we talked about the academic achievement initial slides of this, and we believe that if every student is provided with an environment where they can excel personally, academically, emotionally, that's the best place they can possibly be. So we look forward to continuing to create that environment for all students. And we just wanted to end with a beautiful slide of our group last year that was inducted into the National Junior Honor Society. We had eighty students and they were commended for all of their efforts and achievements over the course of their three years of games. And we're excited to also have another purpose here to them. So that is our celebration of student learning for a small school. Listen to me more, sorry, questions.
Thank you, we appreciate you getting to this presentation. I just have a quick one. So thanks, I was waiting for that. I remembered, I think, in your last presentation, you mentioned the student tracking their own progress, and you mentioned it again tonight. So I'm curious, what are you noticing about that, that sort of process? Like, are they, you said intrinsic motivation, are you seeing any results? Or just, I'm really interested in that piece that you're working on.
Thank you for that question. I think we are noticing that our goal in doing that is to start to shift the mindset of I'm smart or I'm not smart. And what we're able to help students see exactly where they are and to see their growth. We are starting to see that. We just need to remind students of those moments of challenge that you could do this, look where you were two weeks ago, look where you are now. And by providing that feedback along with the targeted, and you're in this place because you used X, Y, or Z strategy. That's hoping, or we're hoping that's helping students to not only continue to persevere through things, but to reflect on their successes by looking at the actual data. And I would say, we've noticed tremendous, you know, shifts in specifically our students who are receiving very targeted support in this. They are very excited to track their progress and celebrate. That's exactly what we want. Because we don't want a culture where students need to compare, you know, this is this is where I am, and this is where the kid sitting next to me is. We want students, you know, using their own progress and performance to say, I got better today and I'm proud of my work.
I just want to comment on, you know, what you just said, that that's so wonderful life lesson to get those kids that, you know, they don't always have to compare themselves to other people, that as long as they do the work and they can, you know, improve themselves, that that's just as important as, you know, maybe somebody else being, you know, better at something than, you know, that's introspective, you know, teaching them that.
That's great, thanks.
One quick question kind of going up, I think what Cara was asking, do you see a lot of, like, some of the, either the intramural sports or the clubs the kids are doing, like playing a a big impact in either how they see themselves and how they're growing, or, you know, even just kids saying, hey, which is this club that went and started? You know, are we seeing a lot of that, especially coming out of being in school full-time for a couple of years now? Think we see that coming back more in, in really back in the kids?
Yeah, I would, I would say participation in our extracurricular programming has increased this year more than last year. And I think we see when students feel connected, they develop circles and then those circles extend into the classroom. And again, we know the connection between belonging and achievement or potential for achievement. So I think in a presentation focused on academic achievement, we would need to also include a lot of the other programming that we have because it's so closely to what our kids, how they see themselves, how they see, you know, themselves as a member of our school community. And then ultimately, how they see themselves as a student. Thanks so much.
All right, so some old business here, series of contracts. We have the administrative assistance agreement to institute school committee and the local AASSEIU. Anybody to make motion?
Make a motion, the school committee votes to approve. Make a motion to approve the administrative assistance agreement between institute school committee and local AASIU covering the dates July 1st, 2022 through June 30, 2025.
All favor? Okay.
Another one. Make a motion to approve the bus and van drivers agreement between institute school committee and AFSCMB Council 93, Local 1700, covering the years July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2025.
Second, okay, all in favor?
All right. Make a motion to approve the custodians agreement between institute school committee and this is the same. Sorry, make a motion to accept, accept the custodians agreement between institute school committee and AFSCMB Council 93, Local 1700 from July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2025.
Second, all in favor?
All right. And finally, make a motion to approve the paraprofessional agreement between institute school committee and local AASIU from September 1st, 2022 through August 31st, 2025.
Second. Next, we have the social educational collaborative update superintendent market.
Thank you very much. Just a, a quick update from our recent meeting of the collaborative. The FY23 financial report was presented similar to what Dr. Dutch was for us, an update at the time. Enormously approved by the board, things were in good shape. In fact, the, and then secondly, the board accepted FY22 annual report that was independently audited, so the auditor was there to give a summary. And went over things each year they do that, so that was approved as well. So financially, the collaborative is in good shape, which is great. Then the board, board discontinued new health insurance to move to another one, that was part of their negotiations. So that's more just a pool for that. And then they've got a new interim director of student services who gave a report on some of the curriculum things and things that she was doing along with the staff to acclimate and things seem to be going very well at the collaborative and in real good shape, moving through year three of the, and then makes sense. Wanted to update the committee on that.
Thank you. That's my policy. Or policy committee. We're long, we're long in. Well, the policy subcommittee met to discuss bringing these, bringing policies, it's listed over. The first one we can look at is the expense reimbursement. There are not gigantic changes to the expense reimbursement, it is literally just the mass accounting. I would say the biggest change that we need to note after hearing public comment. So if you look at the first line, our, our old statement said personnel and school department officials who incur expenses and carrying out their authorized things reimbursed. The new policy, which is the master recommendations, that's personnel and department officials who incur authorized expenses. So anything that we approve to be said can be reimbursed. And that just clarifies the process. Another line for us that we knew is that all documentation for expenses during a particular school year must be submitted by June 30th of that year and we're qualified for reimbursement. That's not a procedure that's new, but it's something that we definitely need in here so that and in the second paragraph, the mileage rate will be made at a rate currently being approved by the student, which is what we need to do. That's it. That is adjusted in, in the line of the IRS. And it's standard mileage rate less than excess. But if you have questions about that, can discuss those.
Just, just to address the concerns that were brought up at the beginning of the meeting, they are covered by that first sentence.
Well, authorized.
Authorized.
So for example, let's, I spoke students on a field trip, and I wanted to team everybody suddenly to McDonald's that's pretty I would not be able to do that unless I had figured out that it's an authorized expense.
Okay.
Has to be others. Now, the other thing that I think I heard Ms. Wollinger mentioned was the receipts is not a situation of the policy, it's really what any school district has to do. The question is being analyzed. So if I give you a receipt from McDonald's that just says the balance, or from a restaurant that just says here to the restaurant, because it's all plus. What business offices is actually a ready message to show that we can actually right, normal procedure, and that's not something that we need to.
So what was the practice before with regarding like school trips?
Um, let's see.
You know, buying, like, they take the kids on a school trip and they have to, you know, pay for incidentals. Were they reimbursed for those previous?
If they were planned, yes, but I can't speak to any individual sources, yes, that I just, I don't know. But I'd be licensed, this is the discussion before we get to that second meeting.
Yeah.
It makes sense for anybody to share some examples to see if they do belong here or if it is perceived. So for example, if someone said, hey, I'd like some incidents, I would turn that into a general proceeding. We just can't do that.
And in regard, in specific to these class trips, and when we approve these class trips, you know, do we need a separate policy regarding expenses incurred by, you know, staff on those trips? Is that something you're looking for? What do, what do other districts do? I mean, it is, I mean, I was when I like, we discussed this, this particular policy, it seemed pretty cut and dry to me, you know, but you know, now it's something else that we might, maybe we should take a look at.
Oh, I think that we, we can look at whatever specific instances are, as examples, to talk in general, total generality about it. I don't feel comfortable, you may need to say, hey, let's look at this as a
Right.
The specific, or just a specific obstacle that has happened. A credit card, for example, that's not something that is within our
Right, I mean, that's concerning, that's, that's you know, that's, we're asking staff, the procedure was to have them put that large amount on a credit card and you know, of course, we didn't know about this before, we don't look at this policy, but maybe, you know, that is something that separate policy for expenses that, that happen related to school trips that we're as, as a committee approved, you know, that's.
Yeah, I don't think would necessarily be a separate policy, but for whatever those examples were, we have to look at those with Dr. Dutch. So no, I can't say, oh, this person was asked to do this personally. These trips are typically funded by fundraising and things like that. So usually that's, those are the funds that are expected to pay students. So that's, again, the doctor Dutch question about like teetering, raising money versus straight to money. But this policy is for reimbursement. So this says that any, any authorized expense that anyone has in carrying out their duties, they're reimbursed by this as long as they for transfer receipts. It has to be done that same school year, and then it also addresses language. That's where this is.
So this could, I think, cover that. So say they're going to Montreal in spring. If we're looking at teacher meals for three days, breakfast, lunch, dinner.
If it's, if it's authorized.
Yeah, then that would be covered.
Yes.
Possibly would cover that.
Yeah, so our old policy just says if you would incur expenses, which I think is the confusion. If you are authorized to X, Y, Z, then you would want that side of the this policy says in carrying out your duties, if you would incur them, which is very different.
So how, so how is the authorization part determined? Like, where does that, so like, if we're talking, because I think those are the questions that came up, were around three meals per teacher's, having a variable per diem, depending on, like, so where, if a teacher is gonna decide to go on this trip, where to, like, where's the authorization?
It would be in a completely in that planning process. So when you approve that, they don't give you the breakout work they're spending, kid by kid, day by day. That they work out, your principal and then the business office, and then whatever is approved and authorized for that trip, that's what they need.
So who's making the decision on authorization, I guess, is what I'm asking.
The principal and the business office.
Okay.
With pre-lead. So that's the key here.
Yeah.
Conversation.
Okay. Yeah, I guess the other piece I agree with my esteemed colleague around the credit card, having to, having to incur $20,000 for travel seems unreasonable. So I don't know if there's policy that we need to be thinking about. I know, I'm just thinking if I were asked to do that at work, I would be very
Well, I'm interested in where, it's always, and that's something that really
Yeah.
Should be something that
Yeah.
Is discussed.
Yeah.
You know, when I hear that today, there's nothing I can give information.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm just, I'm just saying, I think it's worth exploring if there's a specific example of that, because all there's no accusation.
If, if I could respond, this is Bob Dutch, if I could respond to that last part about the credit card.
Yes.
Nobody's expecting the teachers to put these significant amounts on their credit card. What's historically happened is that we've been able to do purchase orders and then a check to an airline or a hotel. What we're finding now is that the airlines in particular won't take a check. So we, we're suggesting that the advisors go through a travel agent who will take a check from the school district as a, as a mechanism for booking flights for themselves and students as well as the hotels. Okay, hope that answers the question about the credit cards.
Yeah. So first reading. Everybody. Can you move on to the next topic?
Sorry.
Oh, yeah.
So for the, the authorized expenses, do we have, like, and I can say a lot of it's in the planning, do we have, like, a general list of, hey, if something comes up during the trip? This would be considered, you know, authorized, like, you know, kid lost the money, so I paid for the meal, or, you know, general things like that, that we would say, you know, okay, you know, it's pretty certain that we'll pay you back. But it just, you know, it wasn't authorized in the pre-planning, but I'm going to say, well, you didn't But it just, you know, it wasn't authorized in the pre-planning, but I'm going to say, well, you didn't bring it up ahead of time, so we didn't, we're not going to cover it.
Right, so that that's something we have on this tool, but if there's something in the moment and there's a disaster, then of course you just. Your supervisor, Bill, you have a conversation and then surprise, we're just looking for no surprises.
Right, so if the pre-planning, something doesn't come up, but you know, you come back and say, hey, this happened. It's just another conversation like the business of the principal.
I would say, hey, this happened.
I'm I'm generalizing a little bit.
And the key is just communication. All right, the next, the next one is assignments of students to schools. So if you took a look at that in your backup. Special commission may be granted by the superintendent if the residence of the child changes from one attendance area to another during the school year. The change in this policy is that the commission will not extend beyond the current. So there's permission for there are major event and as always. The bus transportation won't be provided for students attending schools outside their attendance area of parents. But that's to allow anyone who moves during the school year not to have disruption. And to continue that, but not to have the issue of legacy. Students were many years in the certain. Will there be a grandfather in? This is ending the last year, I don't know if you remember this, you've never had talked about, yes, in particular. Because it. So it's really important that.
So just to clarify, once we approve this policy, it's in effect. So those parents that are in this situation should expect that next year they will.
Well, they do request every.
Every year.
Requesting every year, this is saying that's not an option, it will not extend.
For students that are already out of districts.
Yeah, just to give you some context, I think. You know, we, this is connected to enrollment, it's connected to our sizes, it's connected to where people are living. We're doing a study right now as part of the new new school project and we're finding that a lot of people live outside the school. They go to that we don't even know about. So we're trying to rein that in, it's becoming prevalent. Where we have, you know, we just need. To make sure we have people that wherever they're living, that's where they later edit that, that's where the children go to school, that's law. So I think what was in here, there was a lot of flexibility, basically you could just. If you moved within situat, but into another, it's most it's pretty much probably elementary. I moved from La Bataque to Jenkins, but I stay here for the rest of the year. Let's say hardship and. I granted one hundred percent of those. Just because I think that makes a lot of sense that they knew their peers, they knew the teachers and that. And so there was, what ended up happening is that turned into the next year and it turned into now a sibling in kindergarten, now we've got five more years. And so it was really throwing off our enrollment numbers, it was really throwing off our ability to plan, it wasn't fair. Put me in a tough spot to judge which persons, subjectively, which person's situation was more trying than others. So you have to say all or none, so I think this is a clear way to say. A nice compromise to say if you move during the middle of the year, fine, you can stay there for that year if you so choose, because of all the reasons we said, that's just. You know, best for child, but potentially knowing that next year we are, you'll be going to your home school. You know, because we also believe our schools are great, that we can meet all the kids' needs in any school. So that's in context.
Any other questions?
No, Bill, do you think that this will have, I don't I don't assume it wouldn't be significant, it will impact. Some elementary for next year, potentially with this change. Yeah, like, I don't, I mean, you see how many kids are. Utilizing this now, but how many would potentially go back to their neighborhood school? Like, will it be impactful relative to attendance at which school next year?
No, it's not a huge number. And those that have been reaching out to me this year already, I have been. We're warning that there is a pause.
I'm just curious how it potentially impacts one school over the other ones. I don't know if it's going to be a net change, net net, are they going to be the same, just different students there, or if it's gonna have a larger enrollment? Change everyone, so you won't have a sea change, it's relatively small. Ultimately insignificant.
In the last policy, we're actually, we were placing JLCD and JLCR. This is from Academy Bell, our nurse leader. She would lend us to adopt administrative business to students policy. And it's like update from twenty twenty one.
Is this just a, is it a new new policy or is it just revised language?
No, it is, we had pages and pages. Things that maybe had been adding possibly creative writing over the years. This is just going back to the recommended policy from Mass, which they updated in twenty twenty months.
And Kelly likes this one.
All right, so I would welcome anyone who has additional questions after the reach out to me or to Janice. Or to Mike, we will be having another some committee meeting, we're going to continue bringing. Thank you so much.
I just want to thank this just go in the committee, Mike and Janice. I know there's a lot of work, there's a lot of words, and I think there's a lot of important documents in here. But what we haven't been able to do, I think, since COVID, all the other things on our plate is to reassess our policies and very good practice to. This here's an example, having outdated medical field information, some of what's, you know, needed for COVID and other stuff, which is twenty years old. To realign and have our nurse leader and school doctor look at some of the stuff, for example. And updating, it's really important to have this as a steady part of our work, well, for the school year is is really good, so that's what I can.
Yeah, thank you, agreed superintendent, it's definitely nice to see policies back on the agenda.
How are we choosing which policies to look at, just subjects that have kind of.
We have giant. List that need to be covered that we're just bringing. About period time, they prioritize.
Thank you. That sounds like a blast.
All right, Assistant Superintendent Strissel leadership.
So for my leadership report, I want to say the very, very, very patient. Right here, he's Steve Sweat and Liz Rendell, who I am going to hand the microphone to. What they are going to share with you is the work they've done with financial literacy, if you remember. Liz and company wrote a grant and gave a word in brief, they did some correct corrective work. They had a really creative solution to meeting the expectations and showed that. Some great interdisciplinary work, so they're all here to share that with you. And again, I want to thank them for joining so much of this.
Thanks for having us. Not just on my screen, so thanks for having us. Don't genuinely thank you for having us, we want to share a little bit about the work we've been doing in financial literacy. Perfect, yeah, and we genuinely believe this is important, we share the table of statistics that really resonated with what we're doing with kids. Our foundation, if you're not familiar with it, is a nonprofit that focuses on arts creativity, climate, education. And talking about eighty six percent of high school students, they need these skills to understand personal personal finances and. Thirty percent of kids are reporting that they're just not learning them in school. And then we talked about a little more recent stat about the crucial skills that financial literacy provides for this complex world and just personal finances, it's just. How to be in life, not about like majoring in it, but just to do these things. So we felt like it was really important to implement this. So on the next slide, you'll see kind of this timeline that we've gone on. In January, former governor Baker signed an act relative to financial literacy. For us, and I say for us, because then that helped Desi to create and implement some guidance for financial literacy. And then, like Mr. Striscle said, we applied for it and were granted a grant for financial literacy. So we took the opportunity after the spring of twenty twenty two to assemble a team. Of educators to really prioritize along with our pillars. How we could create a program that involve both teachers of math, business, social studies with their backgrounds, but also. To create something for kids that was useful. When we created these, we rooted these in the standards. And recognize that if we wanted all of our students to have the opportunity to get these financial skills, we needed to be creative about how we implemented them. So what we did was we took these four big topics and for any of us familiar with the standards. These were written a little differently, normally we got like a standard, and this is one of the only places that we've seen that they create topics. And then so these were the four big topics, again, all pretty accessible when we like look at the surface, but we said like, how do we make these alive? For kids sitting on a high school seat to say like, all right, that's awesome, you want me to save money, it's a great idea, but how do we tune that? How does that really impact me when I want to spend my money going to Marias or getting my coffee on the way and we're getting the latest and greatest headgear for spirit week? So as we move to the next slide, you'll see some of the pieces where we said like, hey, these are some of those essential learning outcomes that we need kids to have. Yeah, balancing checkup legitimate, like we're talking about like in this day and age of online commerce, sometimes there is a need. Just like Dr. Gush just said, like that checks aren't taken everywhere, but sometimes it's the only place we can bribe them through here. Saving plan for post post-high school, whether that's college or career. Actual cost of loans and types of loans, credit card debt, which we just did last last week, we're kids like, well, that's a loan, like, yeah, it's a different kind of loan. And here's how that works with interest and occurring interest. So those are just some of the pieces we talked about and I share with Mr. Sweat, so we talk about some implementation.
And thank you, and the the process has been great, started grounded in frameworks, standards. Groups of of teachers gathered together from business, math and history to write the lessons. And that was just wonderful, probably almost got to work with people, right, and often gets a chance to work with my colleagues here. To develop curriculum and lessons. And so that was. That was just a joy to to work there. Pretty quickly and enjoy doing it because it was taking the skills that they had. Putting them services on, they knew was important, financial literacy. This one particularly is focusing on the question of how taxes and income impact my daily life. Next slide, please. And and on this one, the important thing is that there's a lot of options. On this one single standard, there was an I-CIVICS graphics, the terms and tax structures. There's federal data on trends of inequality and income. There was one about transportation costs and public safety, the cost of that, and what does government do when government gets our money for our taxes? And finally, on an interactive exploration, all the different information that can be found in a single page. And this is just four of the examples, and in all of the different standards, they're built out. So the teachers and students can get the examples that they need to teach the way they want to, to make sure that students. Are able to bring financial literacy and understandings to the conversations that they want.
Hey, everybody. I think just to pull together what you guys said, this learning sequence that we have planned for students. The goal is it's a it's a tier one financial literacy experience for students, so every student. By the end of typically this sophomore year, we have a couple standards that's still in the junior year, where students all have to take a history class. The four topics, the twenty five standards are all addressed embedded into core classes that students will take throughout their those times. So every student will have that experience. So that learning sequence along with our culminating credit for life fair in eleventh grade. Engages students in meaningful, relevant financial learning experiences. And the hope is that students really enjoy this and they get the bug and they want to do more. They want in their junior year, senior year, they want to take investing in personal finance and business, which is a year long elective statistics, math, independent living, economics. And the social studies department, so there are a lot of students, there are a lot of opportunities to extend students beyond just the core tier one experiences that we. Designed and it needs a disciplinary way. Well, here we go, Mr. Gates, central office staff, a little shadow here for our credit for life fair, right? I'm not sure, it was a a shout out to this in the prior, but I want to take a quick second here to describe and Mr. Pfeifer on the other end of this. Did an awesome job putting together a highlight video of the credit for life fair, if you don't know, it's an interactive fair for students. This is our second annual fair, it's championed by schools across the state, partnering financial institutions, partnering organizations, nonprofits and community experts. Essentially, students are put in a scenario where they envision themselves in their twenty five year old life, right? What would their potential job or career be? What would related expenses be? What might debt be related to that? They experience and visit fifteen experiential booths, addressing topics such as groceries, clothing, transportation, housing insurance for time, and just name a few. The goal is for students to balance their real monthly budget and to not overspend. Goal is to get autonomous. Young adults not living at home, right? This amazing event would have been possible without our approximately fifty volunteers, so as a quick slide. We have fifty volunteers, Mr. Gates, central office team, college organizations that supported the fair with materials, financial. Financial support, human services, resources, you know, generous donations from families, local area businesses. And the reality is that we couldn't do it without any of that, it was just an amazing collaborative experience. Special shout out for a couple faculty members. Joe Humphrey, Steve Hawley, Jackie Frangello, they joined on the steering committee with myself that pulled this event together. We also partnered with amazing community champion in the San Maria, and will diligently coordinate over fifty volunteers to pull this off. We have an amazing, in my opinion, an amazing new tradition that engages the community in meaningful and a meaningful real life learning opportunities for our students. Again, everybody from SCTV, thanks, to folks at this table. You're getting so. Yeah, this doesn't do much justice, but the video on SCTV.
Thank you so much for the presentation, that's fantastic, such an amazing. It's it's great what you've done, incredible, pulling together the trick though, and things like that to collaborate, so we appreciate it. As parents too for kids, and guess these real life skills are important. Questions, anyone?
I think it's great, I mean, this is my area of interest and I just, I love that. I think we've always, since I've been doing this, we want like how is financial literacy embedded, and I think that finally. It's taken years and and I appreciate the fact that it appears as if it's now embedded and gives kids opportunities. I just a couple of questions, is the grant that we received, did that allow you? The time to implement this or is that grant money spent and are these programs now, it sounds like they're they're. Intertwined in our current curriculum ongoing.
Yeah, great question. So the money is spent, the grant is over, we couldn't reapply, the grant is out there again, we couldn't reapply because we had already taken funds from it. What we used to grant money for was to spend time as teachers to create lessons and build lessons for them. Um, there was, there are some, there's a ton, Mr. Mayor, can see this, there's a ton of free open resources in the financial literacy world, um, which was interesting for us as educators, because a lot of times you don't find, uh, a lot of like dot org and really like positive um, opportunities for curriculum that are on the internet, if you will. Um, so a lot of the work that we did was like calibrating what we know would be true as a history teacher or a math teacher or a business teacher, and then figuring out how we mesh that with the recommended skill. So yeah, to answer your question, um, that's what news for. And the, the creative piece was, we were like, how do we get all kids to be exposed to this? Because we do have tons of students who choose and elect to take statistics, or choose and elect to take those four courses that we gave there. But all kids need to be exposed to it. So we said, like, how do we meet those needs? All students in ninth grade take these classes, all students in this, in tenth grade take these classes. So the opportunity exists now that our juniors who just had the opportunity to do credit for life, they haven't been exposed like our sitting ninth and tenth graders are right now. And when I tell you that I taught a lesson last week about, um, types of debt, and the next day the kids are like, we're doing another everything, we do a financial literacy, I'm like, oh, that means I might be boring, boring. This is really important to them. So, um, we kind of got the vibe of this right around the same time, the math department, we were doing some, um, post-call, or post-secondary planning with kids and saying like, hey, when you look, and here's the cost of college with no funding, here's the cost to get an apartment or pay for your school, your trade, and kids are like, what? Oh, my gosh. So we actually use some of these lessons that are used in a business class, or are used in math class to, to build the curriculum. So we're really happy about it. Like, would it be awesome if everybody took a financial literacy class as a eighth grader, ninth grader? Absolutely. But what you think about like the reality of all the other requirements and necessity, we realize that we have the capacity to do it in our system.
And I actually just love the way we do it. It shows that everybody's invested in the topic. I assume it's not just a person who's the champion for it, that everybody cares and is infused into, you know, courses that all these days. So you're hearing it from a lot of adults that have group world experiences, but in that with money.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you so much. No, thank you for the presentation, because I think I've heard, you know, here and there that, um, you know, people in the community are like, why aren't they teaching kids like basic skills, like, you know, exactly what you're talking about? So it's good for the community to hear what exactly is going on in the schools and how we're trying to help kids, not just, you know, educate them, but financially educate them as well. Thanks. Minutes, November seventh as well as November twenty first. Everybody want to make a motion for the seventh?
Uh, I move that we approve the November seventh, twenty twenty-two minutes as presented.
Oh, favor?
I. And then on the, uh, minutes of the twenty-first, with this being the chair, it's your problem. So, Jeanie, if we can make that one update. Um, I'll move that we approve the November twenty-first, twenty twenty-two minutes as amended. So.
Uh, no warrants tonight. Uh, I'm unaware of any correspondences of any nature, um, other business that anyone has or future agenda items. Okay. Being none, our next scheduled meeting is January ninth, twenty twenty-three. Anything else before we? It was like, yeah. That's the year that's coming up. All right, there's nothing else. Again, happy holidays to everyone present and not present. Um, happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, happy everything. Enjoy time off if you are able to. Uh, I'll take a motion to adjourn and almost eight o'clock, seven fifty-five. You all in favor?
I.